Okay, I call the city council meeting to order. It's six o'clock and it's October 27th, 2019. Please stand for a place.
(inaudible)
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 Well, please.
Councilor Gruber.
Present.
Councilor Rice.
Here.
Councilor Yonkstich. Councilor Cook.
Yeah.
Councilor Hatfield. Here. Councilor Missel.
Here.
Councilor Adams.
Is it?
Mayor House.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to use the next absentee's.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstained, excused, abstained. Any agenda updates that we have?
We made a couple things. The fire doors, the fire levy engine for the cover. And engine for the lot. Do you want to do those during the conference?
Yeah, we can do those.
Well, I believe that fire is going to do an update tonight during the administrative reports.
Okay, just take it up then.
Yeah. Okay, then tonight's consent agenda is checks number 16424 through 16440 and EFTs as follows. Accounts paid on a amount of forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Payroll of October 20, 2019, amount of nineteen thousand twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And minutes from council on budget finance October eight.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consent agenda passed. And administrative reports? Fire and reports.
Administrative reports.
So you guys have the, I think, well, I guess, the...
Yeah, the memo, that's about all.
Yeah, the memo, well, that, but the levy, so we would like, you know, your permission to have Foster Garvey prepare levy documents for your approval. And then the gradual replacement.
So I'd like to move that the city council approved the preparation of the levy documents by the...
Second.
Third.
Okay. Any discussion here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
And I'd like to move that we spend some reap money to repair the two doors in front of the fire hall. That work to be done this fall.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay.
We did, at our administration meeting, we did confirm that we have the money in hand for the project, so yeah. Both speak up. Both speak up.
And then our final issue relates to the burning and the UGA and the piles. So as you all know, the law changed. But we may, in the next couple weeks, ask the city to write a letter to the state attorney general. Because the DNR feels that, you know, there are all these elected officials, like the governor, the DNR, Commissioner of Public Lands, and the attorney general. And the attorney generals, they're just dragging their feet on the updates. Even though the law changed, they haven't updated the whack yet. And they were supposed to have that done by October 15th, so we could burn those piles in the winter. And now they're saying, you know, they might push it off till the spring. So we might want to send them a letter, you know, that we need to burn those. And then the other update to that is that they all reviewed the smoking annual plan, and they found that the city of Roslyn does not have to, like, we're not actually part of it, because we're not DNR protected lands. So it might be back to what I ruled the commissioner holding there last fall, that you could just say go burn the piles.
It's public.
We're going to try to sort that out. DNR is going to come up in the next week or so and cover the piles for us, so they'll burn better.
So would the letter go to DNR directly?
To DNR, we probably, we'll probably end up sending a letter to DNR and the governor and the attorney general, all three, because they have to work together with the college, it's all these, how the sausage gets made on this. But just take it to them.
Three, because I don't mean to put you on the spot, but because of your interest and your experience in the city, you wouldn't write a draft letter for us.
They might write the draft letter for us. We've got a draft.
Okay, okay, thank you. So move that the city send a letter to the attorney general and the lines commissioner, whoever else is indicated to help me with this issue.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. A letter with... Yes, guys?
No, thank you for your support.
Any other administrative groups?
I just, I think it's great you have that on the agenda now.
Yeah.
Sir, for nothing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That was the clerk's idea. It always gets confusing because of public comments being a city function.
Like you. I just want to do a quick update on public works to date, because we work on a water year that ends in October, so a lot of my stuff all kind of comes up to date right now. So a quick overview of what's happening about this last year. We responded to 57 811 locate requests. We've provided 14 new water and 14 new sewer cost estimates for future development in town. We've connected three new water and three new sewer system connections to our existing utilities. That's down eight, we had eight last year and we did 12 connecting the year before that. But we've got 14 more in the pipeline. We replaced the broken fire hydrant that had been hit by a truck up on first Dillon and Nevada on the corner. And we took care of that water pressure issue down in South Avenue. We haven't heard anything for a couple months. Last Friday, a week ago, on the 11th, the Washington State Department of Health came in and gave us our three-year sanitary survey at the Roslyn Water Works facility. City of Roslyn water treatment system passed with no negative remarks. Our system received excellent scores for record keeping. All sanitary protections, alarm systems, water testing procedures are operating as expected. We had no corrections, no report required. Roslyn's water treatment operators meet or exceed all necessary water treatment operational requirements to provide clean, safe drinking water to our public. The current level of water worker certifications meets all Department of Health requirements for Roslyn's scale operations. So they give it through.
Good job.
Through that. At the current rate, we, let's see, City of Roslyn will have provided just short of 100 million gallons of clean drinking water from dominant grid in a year. We had a peak, a peak, a peak in early October, August, I mean, August of 652,000 gallons filled through the system. We're currently running at about 165,000 gallons.
Say the high again.
Yeah, the high was 545,000 gallons, and then it went 165,000. About by a third. Of our capital improvement projects, OM number one, we replaced all eight of the large water meters in town in the system. Those are large, could be three inches up to eight-inch meters. We did the public schools and the water treatment plant and the couple little up at Ronald. So all of our big customers now have new water meters. We should see more accurate water consumption records and potential for some more revenue. Project operating maintenance number three, we have installed backup power at the city reservoir. We've got DNR installed a battery backup system using a Tesla Powerwall. We're currently working on the final electronic connections to that. We will have that up and in service to provide backup power during this coming winter. And if this all works through, we'll be able to use this model to upgrade the, or provide the install of backup power system at the sewer unions and possibly do an upgrade in the future of the water treatment. Work. And to not forget, with regard to water, our, back on May 9th, yeah, May 9th, the Aquavella case for our water rights, we settled. That meant the prime law. Last week, we received our two letters for our educated water rights for Grease Creek and, we got our two letters for rights from the Department of Ecology. So that, we have all the water rights to draw water that we need going into the future. City crew, over this last year, we repaired four leaking pipe collars in the dominant transmission line, two on the filter transmission line up to the reservoir. We repaired six broken sprinkler heads and broken pipes at Renshaw Park following the log show. We spent time in the cemeteries this winter summer assisting with the water system reroute around the kiosk. We also installed a new two-inch backdoor prevention cemetery for Memorial Gardens and that whole side of facilities, and relocated the connections for the new city and the backroom cemeteries. This is the beginning of installation of two, of two new water main systems that'll be running through the cemeteries to increase irrigation out there. We'll be rid of a bunch of 50-year-old corrugated galvanized pipe, which is a lot of leaks. With our increase in cold and wet weather, city crews been busy clearing downtown in storm drains. We've had a lot of help from the city club's back truck and their operators with that. We'll be out next week making the final readings for the season of the water meters in town. And myself, Loomis, and Jim all appreciate the construction this year of a new restroom, a original restroom facility in the shop. Safety equipment and the water is a single installation that provides. These are great help, these are repair city equipment and get the shop ready for winter.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on a new business. First new business is to get this resolution for the affordable housing, supporting house bill 1406.
Mayor, number four?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'd like to officially appoint to the library board Joanne McCoy and Sharon Wonson, per the board suggestion. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the affordable housing resolution for this courthouse bill, 1406. So this is just a housekeeping kind of situation, and we just...
I'll make a motion to approve your house bill 1406.
I'll second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor of passing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. Does that mean? Oh, sorry. Okay. Resolution. So now we'll move on to architectural design review, final copy.
(inaudible). What was the option of your architectural design before?
Second.
We're at 35 feet in this document, right?
It says 35 feet.
And we're at 1,400 feet.
(inaudible) at this time.
Yeah. I can say that the planning and historic reservation committee would like council to revisit quickly the 32 versus 35. If anybody wanted to change the 32.
I mean, I just, my, having been to many meetings and appreciating the worst thing, there's never been...
This is Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
You're in the meeting now.
I just appreciate a very clear vote from the full council, because different people have different opinions. It's kind of gone back and forth for a while, it was 32, it was 35, but I would just appreciate if council would just vote on that one item, so we just have a clear direction.
Yeah, let's just say...
Michelle, can you hear? Michelle?
That's okay. So if council doesn't mind, if you say 35 or 32.
35.
35.
35.
35.
35.
35.
Sorry.
There was also a part that they had reviewed between the two weeks ago and this one, where they were asking for 100% coverage of the commercial area.
Michelle?
I just read that from the attorney's...
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I believe that the attorney suggested that that's something that we should revisit.
Can you ask?
Yeah, I hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Council agrees with that. Quickly, please.
I think that it wasn't 100% of the property, it's 100% of the street frontage.
Right.
So in the back, they could have carpet, or, okay.
The change in the square foot, though, could all of a sudden create a problem with building shape, I think.
Right.
Well, that means a little more discussion.
Yeah, we like just wait, we'll have more discussion with that, okay?
Yeah, of course. Michelle also included some new and useful information here from another community that's not dissimilar to ours. And one option council might have is to just refer, I mean, I'd love to have a vote on this, I'm not asking you not to vote, but to refer that one section back to the planning commission, so we would have a chance to review that information, because we haven't, had all seen that.
Yeah, I believe that one section, that is the problem.
Yeah, okay.
Just refer that back to you.
Appreciate it.
And then we vote on the one that we've discussed, as you see many times.
Yeah, this is an example from still policy of what they've done with their court point, so. I mean, I haven't had time to review any of this, I'd love to...
No, I'm sure they have, yeah, so, yeah. So we're just going to pull that out, so...
Yeah, just that one, I think, is the only one I saw.
Right, and then there were some scribbling things, and I believe she had to move one line down.
Some functionality.
Ultimately, I'd like to think that it's good, it's just, I'm not...
I think we have. Go ahead.
Clarification, we're calling out law coverage?
The commercial, yes.
Actually, Randy, I don't think you want to call out the law coverage, just the 75%.
Correct.
The law coverage maximum is still a thing.
Correct.
So that's page four, number four, right? New construction, we should have a prior building, which is...
It was on page four.
In theory, there's no chance for more than two weeks.
Yeah.
Right.
Which will be later.
Right, so number four is just going away, is what?
Which is really interesting to take that, it's not, you're not voting on that.
Right, once you change it to 100. Those, yeah.
Similar to what we do with the parking.
Oh, oh, right.
One, two. Rather than extending this process.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I interpret that to mean that this part is short, and this part...
Yeah, yes.
That's why I'm tripping on it.
Yes.
For further discussion. For further discussion.
No, we just, yeah, we're not saying no. I'm just saying not to...
Oh.
Just one of the words was the turn post with the jigsaw trim. We discussed doing, changing that, I think, to ornamental, I thought, because jigsaw's a tool and not an actual technique of teamwork. And so, that was just something, it just bugs me, because it's not, it's not an actual thing to do.
We're not there to it, it's just who has been there.
So that was the only word I want changed. That would be page seven of nine. It's down on number 15, actually, I'm sorry, on 15, and it would be number three, on A, number three, on 15.
Jigsaw to ornamental?
Yeah, ornamental.
I remember that, that bugged you, and I...
It bothered me from the first time. I totally get it, I get it. It's fair. I'm a builder, all right? It's not the right term.
Words have to be what they are.
What are the areas of conditions that would call us the square foot?
Versus what?
Well, 1300.
We could just say yes or no.
Yeah.
If council doesn't mind, maybe we could say yes or no to 1400 square feet.
Because that was the big one, the big issue, it was pretty much one, was a contentious one.
Yeah, yes or no. Yes.
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 Clarification?
1400.
Yeah.
What about the, oh, okay.
Well, you know, this is the 20th copy, and 21st, literally, was the one scribbling change and one line change, except from two weeks. So there's nothing new.
Is this second copy just like the version before? Oh, this is the edited version, and this is the retained one.
Right.
Oh, okay. So I don't really keep going back and back and back.
No.
It's just...
Nine of nine is the last stage.
Definition, right. So what we were saying on the covered entry or porch about like four by four versus 16 square feet.
16 square feet, is that right, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah, so the 16 square feet is a footprint of it, so it's not the roof area, which is, I think, what it previously wrecked. So there are a lot of 16-foot footprints for that little covered entryway. Right. We're just not telling them it has to be. That's what I want to get to.
Of course.
Okay.
Are we good? All in favor of this?
Isn't there public comment on this?
No, there's not. All in favor of the architectural design review code, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Architectural design review code has passed.
Thank the commission for the long and hard work on this.
I think there was 19 meetings, at least, 20 copies of this document.
Just to clarify, I thought there was supposed to be a public comment when you guys were voting on, like, there's a public comment on non-agenda items, and then...
We have the required public comment period towards this.
For this thing, I think.
It's just we have so many meetings.
I know. It's too bad everybody sat here agreeing we wanted smaller houses, and you guys just made every dimension bigger.
Yeah, right. We didn't make them bigger.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, you did.
Actually, we blessed them, because it was on an average, and now we're actually to a lower point.
But the 1,400 square foot before included the front porch, and now it doesn't, so of course it could have an additional 1,400 square foot.
This discussion is over, you guys, let's just, let's move on. So now it's time for citizens' comments on a lot of JDI, just like this.
I got something.
You know what else, guys? Yes, James.
Hello.
James Cantbury, 302 South Third Street.
And what I'm here to do is talk about something that is...
Goodbye, Michelle, sorry.
Decreased my quality of life more than anything could possibly have happened in the past 25 years I've lived here, and that is noise. And I'm not talking about construction noise, I'm not talking about pouring out of the bars at 2:00 AM, I can see all that. I'm talking about uncontrolled amplified music coming from the stonehouse, coming from base camp, and coming from the yard. I'm going to give you guys a copy of the City of Roslyn code with the City of Ellensburg, well, Kidittas County code, City of Ellensburg code, and, anyway, give you something, definitely. The one difference you'll notice on these codes, and I'll reveal now, is they have an enforceable line on time. Here in the City of Roslyn, you can make as much noise as you want anywhere from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I could put speakers on my deck, blast them all day long. Police could show up, and I could go tell them to pound sand. You could not do a thing to me. Now, can you do that in the county? No, you cannot. Can you do that in the City of Ellensburg? Absolutely not, because there's a rebuttable presumption that in those off-hours, they will determine, law enforcement, what is reasonable. And in my mind, those businesses, and sometimes I like to construe like the Stonehouse, it's a wedding. No, it's a business of catering to weddings. Think they can do whatever they want. I've been up in my house all summer long, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, four hours straight. I can't even close my windows, and it comes into my living room. Drives me absolutely crazy. And what I want to put to you is, where do the rights of people who live here come, subject to these businesses? Where do my rights come in over that? And that's my biggest problem.
So you're suggesting something more enforceable, like a decibel level, or...
Absolutely. Decibel level, and this is a discussion for a much longer point, is a really bad idea, because this, it's so hard to check, monitor, you have to have calibrated decibels, like all these other technical things. Really, what most cities do is distance. Distance and what is reasonable. And there are plenty of exceptions for, you know, the rodeo weekend, all this kind of stuff, where a lot of codes don't come into play. Construction, normal course, my neighbor cutting his chainsaw, they couldn't love me enough. That's not good, probably, that's productive, people building their houses. But amplified music is unreasonable. I wouldn't impose my music on somebody, why should it be imposed on me? I don't get that, all the rules, and so that's what I have.
I think we all should do it and take...
Can you do it and think about it, and only get through that's here?
Enforceability.
I think it's important, all that.
If it's not enforceable, it's completely worthless. Worthless. And I spoke with Chief Bland today, just to go over this, and I just spoke with some of that sheriff's office. And one quick thing, how many citations do you think, and ever...
Zero.
Zero, why is that? Just ask yourself, why is that? The county, maybe two or three a year, but what they do, you send a deputy out, a warning is usually enough, because when you're threatened with a 250 or 500 dollar fine, it's like, oh, I think I'll turn that down.
Suddenly it changes your mind.
I'm not even talking about the bars, I'm talking about open-air forums.
You could hear the pride speech the other weekend all night, yeah, yeah.
Can I...
It was off the charts.
Can I respond? I really appreciate your comment, thank you so much. I think that is something that we need to address, for sure. And I like to think that these business owners, if they're aware, and if we have a change in our code that is enforceable, that we are, you know, friendly and say, hey, as a business who's, you know, allowing this, you need to know that our rules are updated and be prepared, and if they have that behind them in terms of the enforcement, I'm sure they're happy to ask their clients, because I live here, too. And they have to sit there and deal with it, and be bombarded.
It's the business owner's responsibility, they can't pass it by, say, oh, well, I rented it out to a wedding, and they hired a DJ.
I don't think we should assume that they...
Too bad.
I mean, it, you know, they're in this wild market right now.
Like most of infractions, intent is not at play. It may not have been your intent that was, like a speaking ticket, I didn't intend to do 95, and suddenly, well, you did.
But I think the business owners would be willing to comply with that, for sure. You know, it's just a matter of having what's appropriate on our, in our code, so it is enforceable.
Yeah, I think it's something we definitely need to...
That's a starting point, and help...
This is helping in the future.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you very much.
To be completely honest, you know, our time is taken up with the budget towards the end of the year, so it'll be after the first of the year that we would be able to have ability to revisit this. I would invite you to come back at that time.
Oh, yeah, I'll be back, definitely, we'll follow.
Before next summer.
After the summer and everything else.
We'll follow.
Other citizens' comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, Doug Kilgore from 145 North Fifth Street. I rise to speak about the Clealum UGA Bullfrog Flats matter coming before us, with a request that the City of Roslyn enter comments on impacts that may affect our city. Now, this, this project was approved back in 2002, but it never got built, or not never, but it didn't get built. And in the course of that almost 18, well, whatever, less than 20 years, Clealum has gone ahead and expanded its UGA in other areas, because it wanted growth that it wasn't getting in the UGA it already approved. So there will be impacts on Roslyn from this project. I wanted to point out a couple of other things that may not be generally known. When that project was approved and analyzed, it was analyzed with the assumption that Sankadia would honor its commitments to the community that were contained in the Ridge settlement agreement. Now, that settlement agreement reduced the number of housing units within the resort by 865 units. So that approval was predicated on 865 units that will be built now, not being built. In 2010, Judge Sparks struck that agreement and tore it up. So those protections are no longer here for our community, and the project needs to be analyzed realistically and to account for the additional units that will now be built. Also, under that agreement, there were 550 acres of open space that was protected and available to the public for recreation. Those 550 acres were removed from Conservation easements by the KCT after 2010, when the judge ripped up our agreement, and as a result, now is being bulldozed and developed. But across the street, those people that are going to be moving in there would have relied on some of those recreational opportunities, and the other visitors coming to our community could have relied on those opportunities, but they don't have them now. So that, that impact will need to be analyzed. More, more pointedly to the City of Roslyn, though, we have this agreement on our, we're not, we're not connected to any of that by way of our water system, fortunately, but our sewer system, we share the same sewer system, and we have a right to a certain number of hookups. And a lot of us have been concerned that Clealum has been hooking up and hooking up and hooking up, and may, may use up the hookups that we have a right to before we get a chance to use them. So that, that subject's going to need to be analyzed. Now, it's not like a moment of hairburn, my hair's on fire, we need to act, this is an emergency, just to pay attention. Clealum has said they're going to analyze all the impacts, and if they don't, we'll have a chance to read the draft impact statement and ask that things that are not analyzed get analyzed. But I would ask that the City of Roslyn step up and speak to these issues, because we will be impacted. The other matter is dark sky. Now, the Ridge settlement agreement had a dark sky provision that covered the resort. That, that no longer exists. Within the resort, they do require owners there to install lighting that complies with that. But who knows what this other developer is going to do? And how is that going to affect us with a permanent sunrise down in, all night long, down Bullfrog Way? So these are things that would help us if we spoke up and we could assert ourselves to advance our own interests and protect the qualities of our city that we enjoy.
We've had two council members actually draft notes, and they will hopefully, and will definitely be given to the city. Because a couple of us are going to this meeting, so...
Thank, thank you. And then my, my other, just, I'd like to thank you for passing the resolution on House Bill. What was it? 4106.
4006.
4006. But I, we still have not seen action from the county. And our county commissioners should take equivalent action for us to get maximum benefit here in our region. There, there's some argument as to how that law is going to be interpreted, but some opinions suggest that if the county of a city where a city is located does not also proceed along the same lines, that either the reimbursement is less or, or we may not be eligible for it.
That would be a question for them.
We, we, I just would ask the city to ask our, our, our county representatives to raise this issue and take equivalent action before the end of the year, which is what's needed to keep in stream on this. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments on a lot of agenda items? Then we'll move on to council concerns and initiatives.
Based on our, I had been meeting earlier today, I'd like to move that the engineering for the cover replacement at the reservoir be issued. You take bids, that's a bid process, right? So we do, we do a lot of bids for the second.
I have a second there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to request a nay.
Engineer, continue with the lottery.
And then as a second one, yes, that the, that the bids go out for engineering to proceed replacement of the dominant water line.
The second one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. And we also will request that the chief.
Is that the remaining?
As well, since we're on a contract.
Is that the remaining portion that we have to get?
I guess not the last mile, per from.
Correct.
But I went up to that.
The majority of the. Majority of it.
Over, over the bridge?
Yeah, east of the.
East of the bridge and then going, and then going a mile up towards Dahmer yourself?
I'm not shy.
Good, complicated portion apparently.
Any other concerns, council?
I'm making a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
We need letter, letter? Well, so it's still in a draft form. We need, I was going to incorporate a little bit more.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
Based on this other letter that Tom here in wrote. Just to kind of pull some points from that.
And Tom's would just say.
I saw that before.
He sent his, yeah, but I just might find.
Did he, would he just do a motion to have later finish your letter?
Yeah, so moved.
He's so excited.
Thank you.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we have a second on the adjournment?
I'll make sure.
All right, actually, really quick, we have an update with the library and what's going on with the library. I know they come every week. And I just have a few questions.
Well, the contracts for the, both of the grants are almost done. We've submitted all the spoke of work and everything, we've had to answer some questions on one of them. And when that goes through, then we'll walk to bid. And it'll probably be early spring when that everyone happens. We'll know more when the bid's coming, as far as timing is concerned. We haven't made, council hasn't made a decision if we're going to the Hillgate Rice Building or somewhere else, but.
And it's just really for the grant students, we were, we're there out, but.
Yeah, I forget, we're in the avenue. We also discussed where council chambers will be and where city's going to be. We'll probably put a kiosk out here for like one employee to be here and then two somewhere in the Hillgate Rice.
Do you have the other recommendations for council chambers for debate?
It might be in the library.
Oh, the school, yeah, the school would be, yeah, it's a little bit.
Yeah, maybe the gym.
We're kind of, yeah, I've been kind of turning people away just to make sure that there is room for it.
Then we've got 88 there with the council meetings, so we can figure out.
And there is 88 parking up there, or in the back, in the back portion of it.
Can we get any, any to the actual council chamber, maybe with the actual meeting, okay, Dave?
Yeah.
That would be the biggest.
It's just back, it's in the backside of the, yeah, the building.
Would it be a flat cost? You could come up with this for, for session or something, so we had an idea for budget?
It was just the.
We can contact inland.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Yeah, just want to start getting that stuff in mind if we're going to need it.
We'll get it for budget.
Yeah, right.
I'll have them, I'll have, I'll have somebody from inland send a proposal.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need adjournment.